It is 7:02 on Monday, August 19th. I call the regular meeting of the Board of Directors of International Village Condo Association to order. Roll call, please.
Marvin Towne.
Here.
Claude Bosman.
Here.
Francis Maseru.
Here.
Mark Richman. Absent. Sandy Best. Here. John Lambriola.
Here.
Gerald Mira.
Here.
Thank you. We have four.
May I have a motion to waive the reading of the minutes and accept as presented?
I'll make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes.
Claude Bosman?
Uh, yes.
Francis Maseru? Yes. Sandy Best? Yes. John Lambriola?
Yes.
Gerald Mira?
Yes.
And Marvin Towne?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll do the President's message. It'll be a short one. Basically, I have good news and not so good news. The good news is that there is clear and convincing evidence that our security rovers are doing their job. This citation was recently issued to a car parked on our property with expired tags. It was issued at 2:47 a.m., early Friday morning, August 2nd. The not so good news is that it was my car that was ticketed.
Naughty, naughty!
It turns out that I had forgotten to put on this year's sticker on my license plate. So, the truth is, I am thankful for our rovers for doing their job. Better they do it than a meter maid does it. So, thank you to our security staff. The other item is, last month, an informal meeting was held to explore the possibility of creating a play area for the village's children. About a dozen people attended, but only a few parents of young children. Some ideas were discussed, including the possibility that parents would contribute to the cost of the project. But even if only little of the cost would be borne by the association, it would still require approval by the membership, since a playground would constitute a material change to the property. Based on comments from unit owners before, during, and after the meeting, the consensus so far is that there's very little support for such a project. While I personally think it's a good idea to provide a safe play area for our young children, I see little prospect of success. However, I ask that any persons interested in pursuing this project to please submit their ideas or proposals to management for further consideration. And that's the President's message. Next is the manager's report.
Good evening, everybody. Okay, we did have a very busy June and July and August so far this year. First, I will give my management report, and then I'll discuss the finances in the absence of our treasurer. With security, we continue to patrol the storage units, patrolling the rear entrances to the doors of the buildings. We're having regular staff meetings reviewing and retraining policies and procedures. We're enforcing the hours of operations on the laundry rooms, monitoring the wall behind the Marseille. We did replace the camera, which stopped working at the main gate, which used the license plates. In the maintenance area, we continue working on all the areas on that engineering report. We're covering electrical boxes that don't have high voltages. We're continuing to clean up of the wires. We're filling the pitch pans on the roofs for the AC units. We're repairing emergency lights. We're just about finished with all -- well, I believe we finished all the emergency lights, and we're working on the exit lights. Patching and painting where necessary. We have been repairing roof where they're able to reach it and where we're able to get to it. We have purchased six new pool deck umbrellas at a discounted price of $30 each, usually triple that, so we were able to get a good deal with those, so we bought six of those. We are repairing the straps on the pool chairs and the lounges, repainting the walkways of the different buildings. We've already completed Nottingham and Yorkshire with non-slip paint. We just repaired two areas on the Orleans roof. And in conjunction with the roof replacement, our maintenance team is repairing and replacing the wood dovetails on the clubhouse, as well as the wood surrounding the building. They've replaced two wood-covered support columns in the front of the clubhouse and continue the process. Comcast, we had out to review the property, because we have a tremendous amount of uncovered cables, cables coming down from different units, which is Comcast's responsibility. So, we did have them come out and do a full survey, so you will see them with trucks on the property over the next several months, to get that cleaned up and have everything covered and get rid of all the exposed cabling and bury everything. We're replacing some concrete strips on the walkways going into the buildings. Regarding the Grenoble, we completed sealing all the top bricks on the facade of the Grenoble, where that water was coming down and pulling it apart. We have received recommendations from the engineer explaining how to repair the brick facade the most inexpensive way, and he did give us a signed and sealed drawing, which states that we remove two inches of mortar and screw it one inch behind the wall, behind the structural wall. This way, it will secure that side of the building where you see the four-by-fours that we put, the wood holding up that structure. We'll be able to take that away, and we can be in compliance. Regarding banking, we continue to work with Wells Fargo. We came into compliance for the first time in about three years with your Wilma loan, which was a very, very big deal for us. And Mark, our treasurer, was heavily involved with that. We had several meetings with them here on property, and they finally put us into compliance, so they were very happy with that. Now that we're moving into the regular department instead of the probationary department, they are now heavily considering giving us the extension for five more years to that loan that becomes due in February of next year. So, that will be fantastic, because we can move that date all the way down out to 2018 once that happens. We do also have Banco Popular also getting involved, because we want to put the two banks putting bids in, so that we can get the best interest rates as we put that loan further out. Regarding landscaping, of course Christine Bates continues to donate her time with the front entrance. Tree trimming for hurricane season has been completed. They removed the necessary trees and are working on the landscape, working with the landscapers for replanting where necessary. We're continuing to maintain and repair the sprinklers. We had a landscape company change the crew to be more efficient with the cutting and the trimming. Landscaping was cleaned up in front of the Marseille and Heidelberg with new sod. The projects that we're working on now is, we did have to remove a drain piping, which was a storm drain, between the Heidelberg and the Edelweiss, which empties out into the canal. We do have pictures attached for the board that will be towards the last, the very last tab behind your first bit of work, which was the plumbing. That, what you're looking at right here, there's four or five pictures. This is what was taken out. I'll pick it up just to show for a second. This is what your storm drain looked like as we took it. It doesn't look like a storm drain, but this is what it looked like. The reason why we had to do that is, if you recall, we had about two weeks of rain day and night, if you recall, about a month ago. Every day, it rained all day, and it rained at night. It created a sinkhole, and we were really risking losing our seawall, which would have cost a few hundred thousand dollars to fix. So, we were able to get the people in here quickly, drop the price to get it done. They were pricing it out at $67, $6800, and we got it down to $59, and they did the work, and they did it quick. And that's actually to be ratified at the end of the meeting. We did receive the permit to recover the clubhouse roof. Materials arrived. They already completed the portion. There's three roofs here in the clubhouse. You have one over the offices and the cabanas, one over the indoor pool, and one over this whole area. The first roof is complete. They've already been working on this roof. By Thursday, the roof over the indoor pool, Thursday, Friday, depending on rain, will be completed, and then they'll jump onto this roof, complete this roof, along with the air conditioning. As you know, when you walk in, the air conditioning is gone. So, while they are replacing this roof, we were able to save approximately $4,000 by having them do it in conjunction with the roof, so it doesn't have to be restaged, someone doesn't have to come in and then re-cut into the roof. So, it's all being done at the same time. Of course, the tenting of the clubhouse has been completed. We are in the final stages of the permit process for the speed humps. If you recall, we're doing four test speed humps. Believe it or not, it takes a lot longer to get a permit for speed humps than it even does for a roof, because it's the Department of Transportation, and it's people who are constantly driving back and forth. They're very careful about it. So, we will be placing four speed humps, one as a test. One will be over here between the stop sign when you turn in here going before the Yorkshire. You'll have one between Edelweiss and Zurich, one around the interlocking area, and one around the Sangeritz area, where there's long straightaways. So, we'll be able to get a good test and a good feel to see if people are at least slowing down, and then we can make our determination if it makes sense to do more, or if it's working, or if it's not working. We had to go under the pool decking itself, because when we turned off the pumps, when we shut all the power to the clubhouse for the tenting, we noticed, and Marvin was very big in helping us with this, we've noticed the pool dropped eight inches of water with the pumps off, which was a big concern, and we thought it was going to be a big expense to do, because the pool itself obviously was resealed, the pump room was redone. So, it told us a lot how and where this water was, and it actually was under the pool deck itself. And for the first time in I don't know how many years, we do not have a pool leak. We don't have a pool leak now. Net pool leak. We don't have water leaking, because we have been filling that 24 hours a day. Now, we're going to see, I don't, we'll see a difference at the end of this month's bill, but really, the big difference we'll see at the end of September's bill. We get billed at the end of every month, and I am anticipating huge savings, because you were losing more water than anybody anticipated, just underneath the deck itself. That's also there for you for ratification. The Grenoble fire alarm, which was approved at the end of last year, is now going through the permit process, because their alarm is not working. It works, and it's safe, but it's constantly breaking. And that's why it was approved for last year. Now, we have the funds to do it, so we'll be doing that through the savings that we've had with our operational money through the year. We had a sale, we did sell the Lasser units, which, if you recall, over the last year, that was with a hoarder units. So, those monies were received and paid off back assessments, and maintenance owed to the units, and we are receiving timely payments from the new owners, so that also helped your delinquencies. Association title departments, which we have taken title to until the bank forecloses, we now are renting. The first one we're renting in New Orleans for $1,000 a month, which is going straight into our accounts to back assessments, special assessments towards Wilma, to decrease that loan and to cover the maintenance payments. We also have an application in for Nottingham 3X for $1,100 a month. The emergency items to be ratified that we talked about were the storm drains, the AC for the clubhouse, and the piping under that pool deck. So, you have that in the back of your book. Something that is very, shows a very good direction that we're moving in is our delinquencies. Our delinquencies at the last report were at 128 or 129, I think it was 128. This report now is 95. Out of those 95 units, only six new were added. 21 are on payment plans. So, we've dropped down to 68 total non-payers out of the entire community, which is a huge drop from where you were. Well, we moved it, we're moving it down every month. Also, in your report, you see the reports on the progress of the roof, so you can see the after pictures as we go through. This is what the roof up front looks like now, up on top, both the office and cabana side of the clubhouse. And we get progress reports every single day that they're up there, and we go up there every day to see what's happening. Let me see. On the back of this report as well, I gave you the plans of what the engineer is recommending for the Grenoble building, for the brick facade, as well as the shoring of the ceiling in the pump room. Anybody who uses this facility here knows that you've been red-tagged in that pump room since 2009. Well, where we originally thought that it would come to approximately, we budgeted approximately $30,000 to fix that room, it looks that it will be significantly less. It could be even less than half that. We're pricing that out now. I did show you the plans to put the planks in. We're going to do it with a permit. We're going to do it properly, so that we can get rid of that red tag, and we fall into compliance with the city. With that, I'll move into the financials. We had a total income of $284,000 in July and change, and we had a total expenses of $280,000. So, our net income was $3,633 in the positive. So, we're continuing each month to be ahead of where we're supposed to be, which is also a very nice direction that we see the village going into. With that, I am finished with my report, unless you have any questions. And then you have the three, you have the plumber, you have the AC, and you have the pool to ratify.
Sure. Just for my better understanding and also for the owners, these emergency items that were done, was that paid for out of the special assessment fund, or how were those items paid for?
Okay. These were paid out of, the emergency items were paid out of the special assessment fund with the exception of the pool, so $3,200.
How much do we have left in that account?
It says it right on your, let's see here, I'll tell you. It's on page one or two. Okay, so on page three of your manager's report, it says the balance of funds in the 2012 special assessment account is $304,552 as of July 31st.
Okay. And will the pump room also be paid for out of the special assessment fund?
The pump room will probably be paid out of that, yes.
Okay. The Grenoble one, what about that? Would that be special assessment as well?
Well, it's interesting, and again, I won't promise this, but I will tell you the direction that I'm going with that. Based on what we have from the engineer, I believe, I believe that we could possibly do this in-house. If we do it in-house, it's going to be labor that we're already paying. We may have to have a little bit of overtime, but we are looking at trying to do it ourselves without bringing in a contractor.
So, what's your estimate on how much that will cost?
I don't know, because we have to figure out how many of these Tarkon screws we need, how much mortar we need, how many hours it will take to do. I just got this on Friday from the engineer.
And you mentioned the Wilma loan extending up to 2018. What effect will that have going forward on possible plans for a special assessment? Could you kind of help us?
Sure. Sure. I believe that we will have approximately $2 or $2.5 million left on that loan that we will have to pay. If we continue it out to 2018, we're going to be lowering that interest rate dramatically. We did tell the bank to use a figure of a million and a half as opposed to that big figure, just a million and a half to do just things that need to be done over the next year, which would be possibly, and this is just conversation right now, the Nottingham roof, some balconies that show the rebar, and the interior renovations to the six-room any buildings. So, those together will be, and that includes any delinquencies. So, if you add that two and a half, if you take the two and a half and spread it out five more years at a lower interest rate, and you add that million and a half to it, I can't tell you the number, but what I can tell you is it's going to be, it's not going to be a lot of money, because you're spreading it over five years at a low interest rate.
Okay. I just have one more. Well, I just have one more. It's not in your report, but in the Marseille building on the second floor, I've noticed, and last year I gave Chad a tour of it, there was a big black stain on the wall. It was painted over, and it faded away for a while, but it's back. And there's also, we continue to have issues with mold in the laundry room in that particular building on the second floor, and I know at the time Chad told me it's about, it has something to do with replacing the air conditioning in that building, which hasn't been replaced in a couple of years. So, could you give us a report on or update on the situation, either you or Chad?
Yes. The one thing that I can tell you is that the Marseille building, we had a whole electrical box failure, and that was creating problems with your AC through those hallways. We have fixed that last week. So, if you notice, you have air coming through those hallways. Am I correct? You now feel the flow. All right. So, now what we're going to do is go in and test to see what the residual was after that. First, we needed to fix the problem before we could go and do any repairs to any damages because of that. So, now that's what we're going to be doing next week. Sure. Yeah. Second, one more stain.
I want to make a comment about the current special assessment and the refi. Going forward, my understanding is, whatever, however, whether it's through Wells Fargo or another bank, the $2.5 million that's going to be refinanced, the current special assessment income stream, that will be the income to pay off that loan.
Correct.
And that's only those who are currently paying.
Yes.
It's not going to be given to the other unit owners.
Well, yeah.
Okay. However, when we do get financing and we decide on what projects we're going to do, the renovations and so forth, the important ones, that will be spread over all the unit owners, but it's going to be a much smaller amount than we originally anticipated, because we're only going to be doing what absolutely has to be done. So, I just want to clarify, whatever refinancing we do for the Wilma loan, only those who are currently paying the Wilma special assessment, that will continue going toward the Wilma loan, and the rest of it will be for the entire membership.
Yes. Regarding that, anything, everything will remain as is. No one will even realize that currently, because you're just going to, because they're supposed to pay until 2018 anyway. So, all it's doing is making it so that we don't have to step up the pay. So, everything remains the same. The only addition is going to be that million and a half over five years for everybody.
Thank you.
Does that mean that those who already paid their assessment in full will not have to be?
You won't be affected by the two and a half going out to 2018. Yeah. Okay.
Questions from?
I do have something that I need to bring to your attention.
Sure.
You were mentioning about maintenance for the indoor screwing pool. Well, the shower head over by the jacuzzi is broken. I don't know if you fixed it. And also, you've got some bricks by the jacuzzi that are very loose, and people.
When did you notice it was broken?
It's been broken for over a week or so.
Oh, okay. So, it's something new again.
And also, you've got some.
This is new, I know you did something with the shower.
We did one, one big chance later.
But there's another one?
The one on by the jacuzzi indoor.
Okay, so we'll go check it out.
And also by the jacuzzi, when you get out and walk around over towards the indoor pool, you've got some bricks on the floor that are very loose.
We'll look at it tomorrow.
Because somebody could fall and hurt themselves.
Thank you. Yeah, no, we'll look at it tomorrow for you. Just make sure it's there.
Oh, and also, one more thing. Can you please check the ceiling inside the library, because you've got some stains up there. I don't know if you've got a leak.
We can afford the roof to be completely done. And then we'll switch out all the tiles.
Oh, okay, because some of those tiles up there are stained, like there's water coming through.
Check to see if we actually have still water continuing to come through, so that we can let the roofers know. Thanks. Yes? If you're facing the building on the left?
Yeah. The sprinkler, they break it every time. It's already broken again. I don't know if it was a landscaper or somebody doing construction upstairs. It's broken again.
We have this complaint, we fixed it.
What?
We fixed it this.
No, no, it's broken again.
Yeah, we fixed it this morning.
No, it's broken again.
Even this afternoon, you mean? Because he said he fixed it this morning.
He was checking this morning. We fixed it. We have one.
Well, we'll double-check it for you.
I'll double-check.
We'll double-check also, but I want to know, I want you to tell me, tell us if this was done by landscaping or not, because they will reimburse us for it.
But I don't think there was any landscaping recently.
Last week, we had a landscaper?
Yeah, well, last, yeah, last.
Last week, it was working?
Like, two weeks ago, it was a landscaper.
Okay.
But this time, I usually see no landscapers. Somebody, somebody.
Is it the back of the building? Is it the back of the building?
Back of the building to the left?
Yeah.
Towards Bordeaux?
By the walk path.
By Bordeaux?
No.
Side, towards Bordeaux?
Marseille.
Yeah, but the side closest to Bordeaux?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's check it out.
Wait a minute, Bordeaux?
If you're facing the front of the building like you're going to walk in, is it to the left or to the right? If you're in front of your building, walking in?
To the right.
Okay, so it's by Grenoble. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the sales and leasing report.
For the period May 20, 2013 through 2014, 2013, the committee reviewed 17 applications and took the following actions. Approved one roller release, five new annual leases, and eight sales. We approved two permanent occupant applications and dispossessed. We approved two permanent occupant applications and disapproved one annual lease application. For the period June fifteenth, two oh one-three through August fourteenth, two oh one-three, the committee reviewed seventy-four applications and took the following actions. Approved twenty roller releases, twenty-four new annual leases, one seasonal lease, nine permanent occupant applications, and fifteen sales. We approved one transfer of title from mother to son and approved the acquisition of a one-bedroom unit at a courthouse auction. We disapproved one sale and two new annual leases. I'd like to call the attention of the members present that the rentals that we are getting are increasing all the time. The majority of the one-bedroom apartments of the new annual leases are well over eight hundred dollars. We have one for eight twenty-five, another for eight hundred, uh, one for nine forty-nine. Uh, we had an efficiency for a thousand dollars. And two bedrooms are going for a minimum of one thousand, most of them are eleven hundred, eleven fifty, and, uh, some which have been refurbished going even higher. Uh, but the pricing on the one-bedrooms is very, very encouraging, and also on the sales. I, the owner should be aware, if they're contemplating renting their units, or the people who, for whatever reason, are selling their units, to insist that their real estate agents not consider International Village as a low-rent area. We are getting prices for one-bedroom apartments now of sixty-three thousand. A bed, but another one bedroom, fifty-four thousand, an efficiency for forty thousand, and the community and the amenities warrant these higher prices. Uh, if the board will, will agree, I'd like a motion to waive the reading of the detailed reports. And, uh, approve the reports as presented and ratify all the actions.
I still move.
Is there a second? Collette Goslin?
Yes.
Francis Mesro, yes. Sandy Best?
Yes.
John Nabriola?
Aye.
Gerald Miro? Marvin Tao?
Yes.
I'd like to make, uh, one comment on the sale and lease. Uh, the report clearly demonstrates that our rents have been climbing rather dramatically over the last year. Some of our one-bedroom units are now renting for eight hundred dollars or more. Um, two in this report rented at nine hundred dollars, and these are in non-renovated buildings. And there was one one-bedroom unit that just rented for a thousand dollars. We're also seeing healthy increases in our sales prices. And because the association's financial situation has improved, I'm told that we are now getting more sales applications that include the possibility of bank financing. Uh, when we raised the income asset standards last year, some had predicted that it would be more difficult to rent our units, and it would slow down the increase in property values. It turns out the opposite is happening. Not only are our values increasing rapidly, but we're now able to command higher and higher rents. And we're attracting more and more established middle-income people to the village. As we all know, International Village is a superior place to live as compared with the vast majority of condo communities in Inverary, Tamaraq, and other surrounding communities. We're also aware of the demographic changes in Southern Florida. I believe that we should do what we can to keep International Village as the desirable place to live in this area. And I think another increase in qualifying income requirements should seriously be considered. We have a great resort community, and we deserve to attract only the best economically stable families. The next item?
Marvin, if I may, I just wanna mention something before we move off of this agenda item. Tenant evaluations is our current, uh, provider to do background checks and so forth. Um, they have come up with, and, and, well, they're offering for no additional charge, I've seen it done before, where all of our documents, meaning our applications, um, and our entire process can be done by them at no additional charge. We had them do a mock, we sent them everything, they built it in their system, and Francis and I actually were able to click on it as if we were someone who was coming, a potential buyer or renter, and had to fill everything out on the computer. And you have to fill everything out before you can even go to the next page. It has a way of taking the money, uh, for the, for the hundred-dollar, uh, non-refundable fee. If you have three, uh, applicants, there's three pages, and everything has to be filled out. You upload a photo of your car, your license plate, all your registration, everything is done at home with them or the Realtor, which cuts down on the time so that people don't come in with half-applications and have the office work for five hours telling, no, you forgot this, you forgot this, you forgot this. Everything comes in at one time, and including the background check. Uh, if we choose to, they can do employment verification. There is a charge for that, so we told them no, but they're gonna tell us how much. But we don't really need that, but we're gonna get a price for it. But to keep everything at the same price, it simplifies, and it makes sure that everybody has exactly what they're supposed to have in computer format. It makes them put an email address in, uh, the whole nine yards. So this is a very good way for us to also control who gets approved, who doesn't get approv- I shouldn't say that. The sales and leasing committee will always do the approval, because it has to be approved through that process. But now they can get these applications and just simply go through them and say, is this, do we want this? Do we not want this? So just simply because it's a change of procedure, I wanted to bring it up, wanted to make sure that you were okay with that before we continue with them, and there is no extra charge to do this. It's all included.
Francis, you're aware of this?
Oh, yes, it's a wonderful, it'll be a wonderful system. Uh, the, the amount of paper shuffling that we, the, uh, the amount of shuffling of paper that we have to do just to put an application together, and, uh, as, uh, as Jason pointed out, the electronic forms require answers and they require information before you can move to the next page. So you're not searching for items that they're supposed to have in the application that you're missing, you understand? Uh, the tenant evaluation has done a great job on, on our background checks. And, uh, I think this would be a very, very good opportunity for us to get our entire system, get done by, get done electronically. So, I'd say we, we, uh, I would like to give them the go-ahead to, uh, put this into effect. If it doesn't work out, we're not married to it. So I would like a, uh, a motion, please, uh, for us to accept tenant evaluations offer, uh, to do our applications electronically. Sandy Best made the motion.
I'll second it.
Oh, okay. I make the motion to accept the, uh, automatic, uh, filing of the, uh, applications, and Colette, second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
It's under the sales and leases report. Department of Sales and Leasing Report.
Um, I'm just curious, Sid, do you have any comments about this since you're on the committee?
First I hear you, but I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Uh, any other comments on the board?
Uh, my question is, will this change any of the forms that they have to fill out or any of the requirements that they have to go through? To, to qualify for their rental or purchase?
They're using, they're using our forms, our forms are uploaded, uh, they're using everything, it's all populated into our form, so in essence, it's exactly the same process, it's just a third-party doing it at no additional charge, and, and it's electronic.
Because there, there was some concern about how reliable their claims of, uh, income are, the people that, some of the people that applied and, uh, gotten into rentals and so forth. Uh, how will their system be more effective in catching people who may be lying or maybe presenting a fraudulent tax return? Uh, or, uh, there was a suggestion, somebody suggested that maybe another change we could make to our application is to have them give us or this company authorization to request directly from the IRS or a tax return, so that we can, so that at least they're aware of the fact that we can actually get the real thing, so don't, don't try to present a fraudulent one, uh, to us. Is that something that we can work into, whatever we do with tenant evaluations?
Well, yeah, uh, that's a good question. Right now, it's not part of, they, they tell them, but they don't research it. They can add an additional charge, and they'll give us that, that bid. But right now, it, it's just gonna come to us, and when it comes to income verification, we're gonna have to do the income verification.
What I'm saying is that.
We, we considered this previously, a signal, uh, confirm. And it took.
It took too long.
To get the, the government to send us the tax.
Yes, I remember.
But if, if we just include it on, on the form, wouldn't that at least maybe act as, as a disincentive for people to find the first, if they think, oh, well, you know, they don't know how long it's gonna take for that information to come back to us from the IRS, so if we do at least include it on the form, that might deter some people from presenting fraudulent information in the first place. So without any additional cost, is that something we can work into?
Well, we can give them anything that we want to put on those forms, if we wanna put something to say we will check or get off, we already have authorization to do it. They're signing an authorization form. We have an authorization form that they sign, that we can, we can look into whatever we need to look into.
Yes.
Yes, Sid?
Jason asked for a form from the government. The government has a form, an authorization, they have to sign that form. And if it was me, and I was made a phony up, uh, tax return, which is very easy to do, I don't get aware of that, but it is really easy to do. Now, if I know I'm signing on that, I'm not gonna take that chance.
Well, you know, we can, we can add another form to the process, where if it's an official form, like you're saying, to get authorization on an official IRS form, there's no reason why one extra page can't be thrown into this, so the answer is yes. So I can look into that this week, it's a good idea, very good idea. And we can just throw that on there, whether we do it or not is another thing, but we can always put it there.
Uh, I think that the fact that we rely on W-two forms and, uh, current, uh, pay, pay, uh, pay stubs is a more accurate, uh, estimate of the income. And instead, I, I mean, I can get two thousand twelve tax return, but it doesn't mean that now in August two thousand thirteen, you're still making the same money. Whereas a current, um, pay stub.
Easier access with pay stubs. So I, I don't think that the income tax return itself is such a vital portion of the application.
But if, but if we put it as a deterrent, can't hurt, because it's only one extra page.
Yeah, 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 whether we ever use it or not.
We don't have to use it.
Any other comments?
Very interesting that you say that, because I was surprised when I filled it out, anything that comes back to us doesn't even have the full social security number. It has all the X's and just the last four digits or three digits. They protected, it's all encrypted. They don't have it, we don't have it. It's only used for them electronically to pull the information, and when it comes to us, we don't even have the social security number, so it's actually safer for you as an association, because now you won't have social security numbers laying around on pieces of paper.
Okay, uh, Collette Rolle?
Collette Goslin?
Yes.
Francis Mesro, yes. Sandy Best?
Yes.
John Nabriola?
Yes.
Gerald Miro? Marvin Tao?
Yes.
unanimous, thank you all very much, you guys will make a big difference in our revenue.
Uh, next is the ratification of the emergency storm drain replacement.
No, um, you're, you're.
Oh, I'm sorry, ratification of the recess of the June thirteen and July thirteen, twenty thirteen regular board of director meetings.
I still move.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Sandy?
Yes.
Collette Rolle?
Collette Goslin?
Yes.
Francis Mesro, yes. Sandy Best?
Yes.
John Nabriola?
Yes.
Gerald Miro? Marvin Tao?
Yes. Now, ratification of the emergency storm drain replacement. Jason covered this in his, um, manager's report. Uh, there was a sinkhole created after an extended amount of rain. Um, we were able to get the, the item repaired for fifty-nine hundred dollars. Um, not doing it could have caused six-figure damage to the C-wall. It was done, we need to ratify the, the job. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
Motion by Colette, seconded by Sandy. And Collette Rolle?
Collette Goslin?
Yes.
Francis Mesro, yes. Sandy Best?
Yes.
John Nabriola?
Yes.
Gerald Miro?
Yes.
Marvin Tao?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Next is ratification of the air conditioner for the clubhouse. As discussed, um, this was ordered, um, to be done uh, by Todd Knapp in conjunction with the roof repairs. We saved a few thousand dollars, uh, and time by doing it this way. Uh, we, we already gave out the contract, uh, I believe it was discussed in the previous meeting.
It was discussed, and actually, I sent everybody three bids, if you recall, and everybody had, had their bids, so they saw the savings that we were doing it with, uh, Todd Knapp.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, any comments from the board? Any comments from the unit owners? Uh, may I hear a motion to ratify?
I still move.
Francis, uh, Marvin Tao seconds. Collette Rolle, please.
Collette Goslin?
Yes.
Francis Mesro, yes. Sandy Best?
Yes.
John Nabriola?
Yes.
Gerald Miro?
Yes.
Marvin Tao?
Yes.
Unanimous.
And, uh, next item is ratification of the outdoor pool piping replacement. Again, this was covered by Jason earlier. Uh, after the tenting was done, we discovered a drop in, uh, the level of the outdoor pool, and that led to an investigation as to why that happened, and we found a significant leak under the deck of the pool. Um, by fixing that leak, we have virtually stopped all outdoor pool leaking, and we are saving us, we're gonna be saving a heckle of a lot of money. Um, we'll find out more in September and October. And this information was sent out to the board, uh, earlier. Any discussion?
Yes, thanks, Mr. President. Uh, my question on that is, why wasn't this handled or taken care of, um, or even noticed back when the pool was resurfaced, resurfaced recently? Why wasn't it included in the part in the scope of the work? Or is there any possibility that any of the work that they did could have been responsible for any leakages? And if that's the case, can we pursue the company for any liability? Is that even a possibility here? Jason?
Okay, another good question. The answer's no, because if the answer's no, this wouldn't have been covered, found, or been part of the scope of work for the pool, the pool, uh, inside itself, the lower gutter lines, the reforming, that is not what was creating the leak. They did exactly their scope of what they were supposed to do. They did exactly their scope of what they were supposed to do. Um, and it did, it did drop the leaking down considerably, but not nearly of what this did. What ended up happening is they found this between the clubhouse and the pool under the, the bricks. So this is under the pool where they had to change... I'm, I'm sorry, not under the pool. Under the actual deck, that's where they had to go and, and take care of this. So this would not have been covered by any pool contractor.
Okay. Uh, may I have a motion to ratify the contract?
I'll make a motion to ratify the contract for the pool piping replacement.
And do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Colette.
Colleen Goslin?
Yes.
Frances Mesrow, yes. Sandy Best?
Yes.
John Nabriola?
Yes.
Gerald Miro?
Yes.
Marvin Towne?
Yes.
And...
Hallelujah. Uh, next, uh, all the regular, uh, items have been taken care of. We have good and welfare. Um, does anybody wanna make, uh, have any comments or questions? Yes, sir?
I, I live in Marseille. And there are people, when they go into the laundry room, instead of putting into the shoe, it's like individual little bags there. I mean, they're like slugs. And I know you guys have been trying to figure out cameras or what. And I don't, I don't know the solution. But it, it, it's horrible. And I have a funny feeling, I can't prove it, but I think it's people that you, that are renting.
I'll make one comment to that. This complaint is one of many complaints of people who just don't care or are disrespectful or violations. Various different things, and it's happening all throughout the community. My own personal belief is the only enforcement tool we have, um, if it's a non-criminal issue, is basically the fine, is, is the fine and procedure. But the key information we need is to know which unit it, it has, do these people live in. And the only way that, and I, I am aware of it at the moment to, to figure out where we, it's... A camera system can't catch a person in the act. But until, unless we know where that person lives, what door they come out of, or what door they go into, we're not gonna have any way of, of issuing a violation of going through the process. Um, so at some point, I believe later this year, we're going to deal with that question of how can we, um, do something to at least, um, uh, make people responsible for their actions.
And then, the other thing is, in the laundry room, in all these buildings, when's the last time they cleaned out the inside? And I'm not talking about scooping out the lint, but physically go in and clean?
I mean, cleaning out the vents.
The vents.
Good question.
Do you happen to know?
Yes, I happen to know. And it's a very good question. They're all done. They just finished on Friday, all of the buildings.
They did?
On Friday. Well, they didn't do it all in one day. They were doing it over the course of a few months. But they just finished. The, uh, but your building, Marseille...
I don't think they...
Was done, no, they're all done. But him and, I, I think it was Marseille and Heidelberg were the last two. Yeah? So, but I would like you to let us know if you find that it's not drying. You're talking about them not drying their clothes?
Right, right.
Because that would cause that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, the, the lint or whatever. I'm not talking about what the, the, uh, maintenance people do, but in, you know...
You're talking about the going up and out?
Yeah. Or, or, or inside the machi-- or inside the machine.
Okay, inside in the machine is something different?
Oh.
Uh, we're, I'm talking about the vents, which if you're having a problem drying your clothes, that would fix that. You're talking physically, when you open the door, inside there. All right, we'll have to put that on the list to make sure. Okay, I understand.
But, but, don't, don't get me wrong. I'm, I'm not talking about where it can't go...
Where you scoop it, I understand.
Not that, but where you have to physically unscrew it and go in and whatever lint's in that machine.
Oh.
So there may be some lint getting past?
I understand.
And it may getting stuck in the machine.
Okay, we'll take a look at that tomorrow.
Supposedly, that's supposed to be a fire hazard.
Yes, of course.
Right, that's a fire hazard.
Yes, the only thing that I'm gonna check on is, number one, we're gonna go and look. But number two, I'm gonna find out from Exxon is, as part of their cleaning, did they unscrew and go through there? But we're gonna check it tomorrow.
And, and then the other thing is, when you come to Marseille, do you know when you're gonna be coming to Marseille?
Do you want, do you wanna set up an appointment in Motecor? Like, when you're there, you want us to come?
Yeah, I wanna show them, uh...
Speak to us afterwards and with me and chat, and we'll figure out a time.
I'll do it Monday.
Okay. Michael?
Uh, we put in a vending machine, like we talked about, a few meetings ago, anywhere.
Well, what we spoke about, um, and I think that what you're referring to is when we were talking about doing it property-wide, and that was voted down by the board. So, um, so to go in the individual buildings in the laundry rooms, we're not doing that.
Wow, that's not what I meant.
So what, tell me?
Like, one in this building, you know, when people work out, they want water, they buy, go to the machine, buy. Because the gift shop is only open till six, when they are open. And they like to close their doors and go on vacation or close it for five when they're open, supposed to be open till six. So if you plan to come here after work at 5:30, it closes.
And what's the feasibility of putting a beverage machine in the kitchen area?
Okay, we already did, two of the, two of the vendors came out and they basically didn't come back, unfortunately. Uh, and the reason why they didn't come back was because they felt that it wasn't enough money for them to have one machine here. And those were the two vendors. So we can keep checking with other vendors. But the two vendors that we were using to give us bids on what kind of income we could make in the buildings when they came back, and we said we wanted to put only one, they didn't come back.
Should you put one, is, could you put one, like, under the camera or out in the front?
Oh, it didn't have to do with someone stealing. It had to do with them not making enough money.
Right, but when there you got it visible in, in public. And it's also under a camera, so it's under security.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, wouldn't that, would that be, you know...
Yeah, what we'll do is...
Would they be in favor of that? Because that way it's visible, it's publicity, but people are also accessing it.
Well, if you feel comfortable, I will revisit the issue. I'll try and get other companies, because the other two won't come out. And I will begin the process again with, uh, getting one machine for this building.
Camera?
So, yes, we'll take care of it.
Okay, I was just wondering, because I had her nothing since.
Okay, no problem. We'll do it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Michael. And that concludes the meeting for tonight. And I, I, I predicted it's gonna be an hour, and it's an hour, so I'm in the pool. Uh, so thank you all for coming.
Motion to adjourn, motion to adjourn.
May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Any objections? And we have a second and no objections. Goodbye and good luck.